Open the April 3rd meeting of the Bucksport Planning Board. Roll call.
James Morrison.
Yes.
Mike Donald, David Grant's absent. Steve Feit.
Here.
Edward Belcher.
Here.
And George Hansen is not here.
Review and acceptance of minutes from the March 6th meeting. Steve isn't here, can we accept it with just three?
George.
Okay. Here comes George. At his usual time. Now we're from here.
Just in time to take a vote on the minutes, George.
Your vote is needed.
So, review and acceptance of the minutes of the March 6th, 2018 meeting. Make a motion to accept the minutes as written. Did you fix that typo? No?
No, the typo's there.
Yep, somewhere. Maybe you just spin it, I'll find it. And the code enforcement's report. Public here.
I'll fix that for the records.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. All in favor?
What I'm seeing.
Steve wasn't here. Chair's report. Just want to say Jeff and I, I don't know if you're going to- There are a few things, I guess, that we would, I would think that maybe we're doing a little incorrectly, or I'm doing incorrectly, but it was good. I'm glad I went.
Also talked about boardmanship, too. It's a separate topic, they talked about boardmanship, being a good planning board, what it means to be a good board member.
Right, yeah.
Or committee member of any type. Was he a planning board member himself, or just an expert?
Yes, to both. He is on the Southern Main Planning Commission, and he works for different towns, has either the, did he say the planner? He's kind of like a gun-for-hire. If they let somebody go, or they need, somebody retires, he'll fill in, and he works, he named a bunch of towns, Kennybunk, Kennybunkport, Conquah, I think, a couple others. It was good. I think it was well put together. That's it. Code enforcement officers' report.
Well, let's see, next Thursday, the 12th, this coming Thursday, the weekday Thursday, the appointments committee will be meeting, and hopefully determine who's going to fill the vacancies on this board. There's been a few applications coming in. I'm not sure how many, maybe four or five.
Wow.
So, that'll be one of the decisions they'll be making, hopefully, on the 12th. And the ordinance committee also will be meeting on the 12th. They've got their hands full right now, they're dealing with revisions to the property maintenance portion of Chapter 5, which during the process of revising Chapter 5, that became just a building ordinance, and the property maintenance standard in that ordinance now has been taken out, and are going to be moved into another chapter in the town code. So, there's a draft that's been submitted for their review. It might generate some comments, because there's some additional things that have been added to it that aren't there now. So, we'll see how that works. The other thing they're going to be dealing with is a food sovereignty ordinance. I'm not sure you all are aware of that. There's a new state law that allows municipalities to, in effect, exempt small food producers from state food licensing, if they adopt an ordinance that says that to the effect, that they're exempting. There's a model ordinance out there that a lot of towns are adopting, there's like 15 towns now, I think, in that neighborhood, who've adopted this model ordinance that is not reflective of what the law says. There's inconsistencies in this ordinance of what the law says you can do. One of the things that the law specifically states is that the transaction between the food buyer and the food producer has to take place on the premises where the food is produced. So, that rules out the food producer taking their foods out into the world, to farmers' markets, or fairs, or church suppers, or things like that. If you want to buy the food from that farmer, or small food producer, you have to go where they are, where they live, where their food's produced. That's what the law says. This model ordinance over does not say that. This model ordinance specifically says you can go to farmers' markets, and fairs, and so forth, to sell your food, to buy your food from these exempt producers. So, the ordinance, we have come up, but it does not say that, it follows the law. And this is based on MMA's opinion, by the way, of how this law should be applied, and they wrote an article on the latest Maine city and town, it's a monthly magazine they produce, and in the article, they encourage these towns that have adopted this inaccurate ordinance to go back and fix it. So, that will generate some discussions, I'm sure.
Do away with farmers' markets, is that what you're saying?
Nope, nope. What, any food producer that wants to sell on a farmers' market wouldn't need to be licensed by the state. They would need to have a typical, traditional food license from the state, before they could sell their food at places like farmers' markets. This is how the law is worded, and this is how MMA's interpreting the law. But there are others who interpret it differently. They claim that it's, the law, the way the law's worded, it gives municipalities some flexibility to adopt ordinances that say something other than that.
You see, I sell my eggs door-to-door. I don't go and set up someplace to sell them. Essentially, all I'm doing is saving 20 people using gas to come to my place to buy my eggs, versus me using just one vehicle of gas to deliver them as I'm on a route. I wonder if that will be something that will be a-
You asked that question at the last meeting, too, Jim, and I looked into it, and best of my knowledge, if you are a farmer that is producing eggs and sells them on the side, you know, it's not a commercial business operation, it's something you do on the side, that does not require a food license.
Okay, right, just-
If you're a commercial egg farm, yes, but-
Right.
Not a small farmer like yourself, that just has a few hands and sells eggs. That's my understanding. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
At this time, I'll open the limited public forum. It's an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Bruce.
I'm just here to see what's going on.
Seeing none, I'll close the limited public forum. Did you submit your application for the board? You're here every time, so I might as well-
You're like a member.
Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. Sorry, the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Goals and Strategies Implementation.
What I sent out to you in your packet was a copy of all the goals and strategies. I took them out of the actual comprehensive plan and compiled them, so it's a little bit easier to get through. It's still 24 pages, but, or actually, I mean, 23 pages, full. And what I'm asking you to do is take a look at these goals and strategies, and identify the ones that involve the planning board. And hopefully, start a dialogue about how to address these, what the board needs to do to implement these strategies to accomplish the goals. Have you all had a chance to read through these?
Yeah. I think there was about three, she seemed to me there was about three places where the planning board was specifically mentioned that we would be have to review the ordinances. It's a wish list. I was going to highlight it, when I forgot to do it.
Yeah, well, I did. Did anybody else highlight?
Oh, you did, that's good.
I thought about doing it on the copy I sent out to you, but I figured I'd let you come up with your own topics that attract your attention. And some of these, by the way, aren't directly related to the planning board, but they do involve zoning questions, and the first one I came across was on page two. And number three, halfway down, rezoning. The Economic Development Committee says, "Assure that any zoning changes necessary for targeted expansions of industrial and commercial areas are stewarded through the land use ordinance revision process." So, that kind of implies that they're hoping that there might be a way to expedite any changes that might be needed there. We've actually taken steps already to make the ordinance revision process go a little bit faster than it has in the past, so I'm not really sure if there's anything that needed to be done there. The next one I found is on page three. Talks about master plans for Bucksport's commercial areas. It's recommended to develop a plan to guide the area toward the best fit for all uses, including, there's a list of things, and the ones I highlighted are encouraging compatible business activities in these areas. Well, that's a zoning issue. And it really involves taking a look at the table of land uses now, to see if the businesses that are allowed now in the downtown area are in fact compatible with one another, and if not, should they be changed? And that's kind of relates to the next one, it's accommodating the mix of uses, including retail services and residential. Sometimes those all work together harmoniously, sometimes they don't. About halfway down, harmonizing zoning and land use regulation issues with local needs. I guess that would involve having to identify any issues that come up because of restrictions that we might have in our current ordinance that are causing problems for development.
So, I think an example of that is what we did with the lot coverage, and requirements that we ran through DEP. I mean, we're trying to make it so that folks can actually use the property. I guess that's harmonizing zoning.
That was very-
That did.
Very good find point there.
I mean, it could be, it could involve major things, but it could involve minor things, too. I know I've had numerous calls over the years for people wanting to know if they could keep chickens in their backyard, and they happen to live downtown, in the village district. The answer I've had to give them is no, unfortunately, you can't, or ordinance does not allow you to keep chickens, or any farm animals, on your property in the village district. I know for a fact there are people out there that are doing it now, and I haven't received complaints, so is this something that maybe we should take a look at? Also be recommend that we do allow keeping of some types of farm animals, anyway, on properties in the downtown area, but something to think about. Next one I came across is on page five, under number five, encourage energy-efficient housing. And item B, review and, if necessary, revise municipal land use ordinance standard to preserve solar access rights from new or expanded development on adjoining properties. Also allow building setbacks to be adjusted to maximize solar access. I think we've talked about this in the past. We do have a standard now of the ordinance that you look at if there's a potential for a project to cause a problem for an existing solar array. Not a potential one, but if something is existing, you have some solar panels on your roof, and the neighbor, or the next-door neighbor wants to build a three, four-story building, and it's going to block your sunlight, that's an issue under a zoning ordinance, we can deal with now. So, it's not a setback issue, though. We're not requiring additional setbacks because of that, but the comprehensive plan is suggesting that we take a look at that to see if additional setbacks in that scenario might make sense.
Well, what comes up with the board? A plot plan, and a location of a building, and its height and size, you can deal with it at that time, but in budding properties, that's-
Are view sheds protected currently?
We can talk about that later on here, there's a recommendation about that as well.
There you go. A view shed? Someone taking your view away?
Oh.
Touchy thing, when you have all this waterfront views.
But if somebody has invested $10,000 or $20,000 and put solar panels on their roof, and then their neighbor decides to do something that blocks the access to the sun, that's a problem. Complete streets. Advocate for complete street design for driving and transit safety. Handicap accessibility, natural beauty, sidewalks, bikeways, et cetera. We have, the standards for street constructions are mainly in Chapter 10, but we do have some weekly worded requirements for sidewalks. If you do a subdivision, have a subdivision application, you can require a sidewalk as part of the road construction, if it makes sense to do that. You probably wouldn't do it if it's a rural subdivision, but if there's one in town here that was near existing sidewalks, you probably would want to have sidewalks added to that subdivision road. I think you have the ability to do that now, but this sort of talks about things like And a related one is further down, update access management standards. The planning board reviews its current access management standards and compares them to the latest NDOT guidelines. They recommend revisions in the land use ordinance to address any inadequacies. So, that's something that we probably should take a look at at some point in time. On page seven, about halfway down, under parking, revise the land use ordinance to require that residential uses in the downtown make provisions for parking that do not impede snow removal in public lots. There's nothing in the ordinance now that empowers you to address something like that, but this is a suggestion in the comprehensive plan.
I guess you've got to heat those lots, haven't you?
Heat them?
Yeah, keep snow off them, if you can, so they can't impede parking, and, I mean, if we get snow, it's going to be snow. I don't know how you, other than restrict people from packing in the parking lot at the time. In the public parking lots. In a public parking lot. This doesn't kind of make a lot of sense to them.
I don't know if it really belongs to the land use ordinance, we have traffic standards in Chapter 10 that I think addresses that now. There's a couple parking lots in town that have odd and even size to park. You park on one side on odd days, and the other side on even days, and that's enforced by the police. If somebody ignores that.
Somebody's got the nose on a joint because of resident issues in public parking, probably, instead of having private parking.
Well, there's a couple of problems here.
But I'm saying somebody's got that. I would say somebody's got the nose on a joint about that kind of situation that would come up with this.
And the next one kind of follows that in the same vein. They revise the land use ordinance to clarify when and where new or expanding land uses are required to provide onsite parking. Well, we already addressed that in the land use ordinance, I'm not sure what the issue is here. The only place where you don't have to provide onsite parking is if you're developing a building on Main Street. Public parking on Main Street satisfies whatever parking you need. That's the way the ordinance is worded. But any other type of development, like the projects in the industrial park, they have to provide parking on their property. Is that what you're in?
Yeah, it's, most towns, if you rent a place in the downtown area, it has to come with a parking space off the public property. It's true in Belfast, it's true in Bangor, or anyplace like that, you know, you park on a street, or in public parking areas.
So, I'm not sure what revisions we might need to make, and to comply with this recommendation. I think we've already met it, actually. And the last one on this page I found was down at the bottom, the last paragraph. Give the planning board the option to require the installation of sidewalks in new or expanded residential subdivisions that are adjacent to areas of high pedestrian activities. I just talked about that a moment ago. I think you have that, I have that ability to do that now, and through a subdivision review, I think you can require sidewalks, if it makes sense to do that.
That just seems to me like, that's out of proportion, because there's no sidewalks on half the streets in the town. No sidewalk, people walk the streets, or they don't walk them, those particular streets. I think Central Street from going up through, there's no parking, no sidewalk there, anything, you know? You gotta cross Federal Street, and there's a one.
Federal, no. Federal, no. Central on the left side going up.
Yeah. Up to, how far?
Up to School Street. Well, up to the Broadway. Passes it down. Between Central and, between Central and School, that pass of that are intermittent.
There's only one subdivision in town here that would fall under this discussion, and that's the Park Street subdivision. And that subdivision plan did have a sidewalk as part of it, but it has not been built.
Where was Park Street?
Down by Family Dollar.
Oh. That future development was commercial.
Right, but the subdivision plan had a sidewalk on it, and that was, I don't recall if there was a developer-pro sidewalk, or a planning board-required sidewalk. But either way, there was a sidewalk plan that has not been constructed now, when-
It doesn't go anywhere.
When you get, well, I was about to address that. When you get the application for the expansion of Park Street and the expansion of Broadway to intersect, you're probably going to want to think about getting that sidewalk in place, between Broadway and everyone. The next one I came across is on page nine.
That would make a good candidate for Nicholson Ave to have one.
There's been a strong interest in that as well, yeah. Page nine, halfway down, regulations, this is out of Public Safety Services. Review ordinances and policies to assure that public safety needs are adequately addressed, such as firefighting, water supply standards, and site plan and subdivision applications. I think you do have the authority now to require a pond, or a water storage tank, as part of a subdivision review. For subdivisions, obviously, that are far away from town services, like on other Bucks Mills Road or 46, you've not done that, there's never been a requirement for that type of water supply, but I think you can do it now, under our subdivision ordinance, so I'm not sure if we need to make any changes there.
Pretty effectively, you can put in hydrants out in the lake, and suck out of those in any close proximity. Allow it to boat landing, via filling station. Down on the other end, there's other access points, or other ponds. I've installed a few, maybe four, so, called dry hydrants. You just suck the truck up to them, fill them up.
You can take a look at that in the subdivision ordinance, and see if you want to make any changes to that requirement. Let's see, on page 11, down to the bottom, this is under stormwater management. Revise the land use ordinance standards to require stormwater runoff calculations for new site developments to include estimates that are based on recent severe storm events, as well as long-term historical data. I think that language is already there, but we can take a look at that, to see if any changes might need to be needed there. The next one is at the bottom, updating the land use ordinance stormwater runoff standards to provide for the use of low-impact development techniques to reduce or eliminate the volume of stormwater leaving the property. This is the way stormwater management plans are developed now. Treat as much of the stormwater on the property as you can before it discharges. Our ordinance doesn't clearly say that's a priority, but Royal Ridge, for example, the Royal Ridge subdivision did site treatment. They have a plan to treat stormwater in different ways there, so our comprehensive plan is recommending that you follow that trend. Let's see, I didn't find anything again until page 17. Near the top, this is under wastewater disposal. Review road construction design and maintenance standards to determine how they might be amended to reduce the rate of erosion and flow of pollutants, such as salt, from roads into lakes. And the next one after that is related. Update the phosphorus standards in the town's land use ordinances to reflect the latest DEP guidelines. So, this is probably an area that we should take a close look at, and bring things up to date. I recommend you do that. Because the standards are a little out of date now. Page 19, land use ordinance revisions. And the plan notes that the current land use ordinance standards offer generally adequate protection of natural resources, and only minor changes are recommended, making specific reference to the beginning of habitat maps, as a data source for use in land development applications that may affect a valuable natural feature or resource. We don't do that yet. Allow the configuration of new subdivision lots to be altered if a different layout would enhance the protection of key natural features. Well, we have cluster provisions already in the subdivision ordinance that does exactly that. I'm not sure what else you might need- I'm not sure what, what else you might need to do, but you can take a look at it and see if any changes should be made to that part of the ordinance. Now, this next one is, is a good one. Review parcels affected by changes in shoreland zoning guidelines to determine where the resource protection zone should be applied and where it might be discontinued. There were several parcels back a few years ago that we had to put into resource protection because of DEP's requirements. And they were, they were, in effect, they were reacting to inland fisheries and wildlife concerns about the protection of habitats, moderate to high-value habitats. So we did, we, I can't recall how many properties there were, but it was a long process. A lot of notifications were sent out. We had public hearings, there were people that attended, and there were some people who were upset and some really didn't seem to be bothered by it. But the changes had to be made because of the DEP's requirements. Fast forward a few years and all of a sudden now, things have changed and DEP is backpedaling, saying that, by the way, you didn't really need to put these properties into resource protection after all. So unless there's another, another reason why they should be in that zone, you can take them out if you want to. So this is gonna involve a little work because you do have to take a look at each one and say, well, is there another reason it should be an RP other than because DEP told us to? So we'll find some time, hopefully some time, to dig into that. Six, number six, scenic views.
Oh, yeah.
Here we go, Steve. There's a table that lists scenic views that deserve protection and enhancement where possible. The public roadways provide the most likely vantage points for enjoying these vistas. Walkways or other locations, both public and private, should be considered when existing views may be blocked by publicly funded projects. A study of the river views from Main Street is recommended to determine how public policy should address this valuable resource.
Do we have any building height limitations?
Yes.
Done.
And the next one I found is on page 20, down near the bottom. Work with DEP to ensure the town's ordinances meet or exceed them under standards. I think we've done a pretty good job at that, and we'll continue to do a pretty good job of that. Page 21, this is tied into view sheds. This is talking about the view of Buckport Harbor, the bridge in Fort Knox, often described as a million-dollar view. And some recommendations to protect that view are to complete a scenic assessment of this and other significant view sheds in town, and consider building height and width limitations where scenic views are shared. So right now on Main Street, particularly because now we've changed, we've changed the lot coverage limits in this zone we're in now, the downtown shoreline district. Previously, it was 80% lot coverage. You'd cover 80% of your lot with non-vegetated structures, or like buildings or parking lots or whatever, 80%. As part of our review with DEP to make changes, to make it easier for people to develop these lots, we proposed 100% lot coverage, and they accepted that. So now, if you own a lot on Main Street, you can cover the entire thing with a building if you want to, minus setbacks. If setbacks apply, you have to still need setbacks, but there's no more lot coverage limit in this district only. So that raises the question, well, what about these scenic views we have now in the gaps between Main Street? There are some views that people enjoy as they travel down Main Street, particularly people who come here for the first time, get glimpses of that beautiful view out there. Those could go away very easily. There's nothing now to stop that from happening. This whole side of Main Street being filled in from one end to the other.
You get to walk, Mike. Tell them to pack and walk on the walk.
There you go.
I agree. Yeah, how can you stop someone from not being able to sell their property?
Either one of the bridges.
If you own it, you can do what you want.
That's the way it used to be. If you're looking to be able to circle photos, the buildings were shoulder to shoulder all the way down Main Street. So there were no views to the water from Main Street.
Told him there was a fire.
But...
Access to the two ferries.
This is something that the comprehensive plan, though, is recognizing as a potential issue, about protecting the, the view, not just from the walkway, but from other points, away from the water.
Wonder what the landowners, people who own that land, would, would think about that?
Exactly. But the people who have the views that are, that would be the ones that would complain about the loss of the view for somebody developing their lot. I think that their, their obligation then would be to pay the potential taxes that would be from someone making a development on that lot. If they want to keep that view, I think they should probably...
Pull me out. That's all I feel about it. I think, or leave me alone, let me put my building on, you know? If I owned a piece of property that was gonna block somebody else's, I think I'd probably be inclined to believe that it's my property, I probably should be able to do what I want, with permission of the plan.
Build a glass house. Maybe she writes her own glass house.
Yeah. Yeah. And you think it'd bother me to stand there and take a shower in the front room?
It's frosty in there.
Why we live in the country.
Just enhance the view, that's all.
That's right, that's right.
Animated.
Maybe not.
Page 23, at the top, retain current provisions in town ordinances that protect historical resources from unintentional damage during the land development process. Well, again, we, we have that standard now in the ordinance. If you have a developer who is coming in for approval and there's an historical property nearby, you have to look at that to see what the potential impact is going to be on that property. And this is just actually, just suggesting that you keep those provisions.
What is unintentional damage? I, I just don't understand.
Well, it could be something like blasting, you have to blast ledges or foundations.
Yeah, crack the foundation or whatever, yeah.
Things like that could happen.
The plaster.
Part of blasting license to, they have to.
So the last section I found, items that should be of interest to this board is under the land use goal, on the same page 23. The goal is Buckport seeks to preserve its character by maintaining its current balance of residential business, industrial, and rural areas. And strategy number one is to keep ordinances current, conduct a periodic review at least every five years of town land use ordinances to assure that they are consistent with the latest standards, such as stormwater management, highway access management, watershed phosphorus and related non-point source protection measures. And number two, assess the adequacy of commercial and industrial land. This is an EDC responsibility, but they do it jointly with the planning board to discuss any proposed changes that may come out of that committee. So we've, we've already touched on the stormwater management and highway access and phosphorus standards, so this is where they, where they originate from, this land use goal. So that's, that's all I found in these, in all the goals and strategies. That's the, that's what I found, the relevancy to this board. Question, I guess I'll ask you is, what would you like to do with this? Is there a process you'd like to start to do a systematic review of each one of these and determine if any changes should be made? How would you like to go about it?
Why is the population goal written off the staff community? They grow slowly. They want everything. Kind of thought that was, that that being due to the planning board, but...
There are some in there that seem more urgent than others, or maybe urgent's not the right word, but maybe we...
Have priority over the other ones.
Yeah, maybe we deal with the high priority items first and...
Did you see anything with high priority?
Well, a couple of things, Jeff mentioned, we have to be careful with. Yeah, you also mentioned there's some that we're probably already doing.
I'm wondering if maybe a comprehensive review of our land use ordinance might be warranted, a page-by-page review. And as we come across these items that the comprehensive plan asks you to address, we can deal with it as we go through the land use ordinance, page by page.
There's a couple parts here that, like DOT, their entrances, data, updating roadway data, if you can get the latest expectations of data from good road plan versus we compare it to what we've already got in our ordinance. I think there was, on stormwater management, there's anything quite recent, any changes there. Those we can take up.
One topic that came up recently was developing, because Silver Lake does not have a phosphorus control plan, like many water sources around the state. The town manager thought it was a good idea. Would that be something we draft, or would there be a committee that would, that would be relegated to?
Well, that probably would be incorporated in the land use ordinance as a standard that has to be met for development purposes.
I don't know how that's broken out, but I, the ones I've looked at in most town, it's, it's an entirely separate ordinance and plan.
We do, we do consider phosphorus impacts in a development, both in the land use ordinance and also a subdivision review.
Yeah.
But the language might not be as up to date as it could be, and the numbers, the calculations might not be accurate anymore based on new data, so that's something that we should take a look at.
What have we got, the new data, I mean?
I, sorry. No, I think it's the calculations. It's a handbook for calculations. I don't know that there's anyone in the town that can do the calculations, but that's in the plan, and it's in the town code.
Well, you wouldn't expect anybody on the town's payroll to do those calculations for a proposed project. It would be the developer's responsibility to hire a professional to do that.
Right.
And prove a standard being met.
There is a chapter in the, in the ordinances, in the charter, that is specifically for Silver Lake, the heading on it is Silver Lake. And the only, the only thing in it is, you can't swim or wade in Silver Lake. And then beyond that, it's just projects that they had going on back in the 80s and 90s, it's like the whole chapters all over. And that's the only thing in there that says anything about Silver Lake, it's just that the swimming and wading thing. Plenty of room there to...
We have too much development around the lake, other than some walkways, the access point.
But we have a, a road that is right beside the lake, and there's no sort of stoppage for anything that comes off that road going into that lake.
Yeah, the biggest problem is stormwater runoff and best management practices, for, for like the cemetery, for example. That would be a huge phosphorus input if it overflows the road, which it supposedly has. I've not seen it.
I don't know what they're putting on those roads to eat in the underneath of my car, but I prefer not to drink any of it.
So the land use ordinance now deals with, I don't see the word phosphorus being used. I know it's used in the subdivision ordinance, but, but that's a stormwater management issue. And the ordinance now requires a stormwater management plan for any project that's within the watershed of a great pond at risk from development, as identified by MDEP. And we have, we have a couple of those, Silver Lake is one, Jacoba Pond, and Long Pond, I think, are identified as those water bodies that are at risk from development. So if you had a development empty in the watershed of those, then they would be required by ordinance to develop a, or submit a stormwater management plan. That would include things like the, what the phosphorus export is predicted to be from that. Do you want to maybe take some time until the next meeting to go through these? I hope you checked off the ones I highlighted, like I talked about, and maybe do the priority list like, like Brian suggested, open your list of what you think should be dealt with first and second, so...
That's a good idea.
We'll prepare notes next month.
Sounds like a good idea. No?
I think it's a great idea.
Sounds like you assigned us, sounds like you assigned us homework.
Right. Should we keep track of our hours?
We may actually have some new business next month. I'm hoping to, I would think that we might get an application in next month for the second project in the industrial park, but I'm not exactly sure. It could be as soon as next month. The Whole Oceans application, I have no idea when we'd expect that. I know they want to break ground by fall, so that application should be coming in fairly soon.
Where, where exactly are they gonna locate?
Whole Oceans.
Yes.
Yeah. Have you seen that little short video that they did?
Yes, I have.
North End.
So it's the big, the big building, you know, where all the tanks are, is at the northern, northern, northern end of the property, where the pile of...
Yeah, right near the wood, the wood piles out there.
He stated that they own from right where the, the switch station is, for CMP. They own from the riverbank to the road, they, they packed that area, and they don't own all the way to the North Gate. They, they didn't purchase all the way to the North Gate, is what he said. My understanding is that the North Gate is owned by somebody else. And from what I can see, by driving by there, there's quite a bit of stuff still has to be removed so they can put that building in there. Got a lot of stuff, looks like to me, and what I saw from the pictures and the... Is there any update on, on when they're gonna get that, the rest of that stuff out of there that they're supposed to be taking out? All those conveyors and things that they're not even using anymore?
Well, that's, that's gonna require an additional demolition permit. And I've not received an application for that yet. Of course, all those logs will need to be removed. I think that's in progress now, slowly, but I think they're in the process of getting those logs out.
I think somebody mentioned fire earlier, they may be...
So the, all the convey... So the, all the conveyors, structures there will go away, possibly the rest of the, the original brick buildings that are gaping holes in them. I think those will end up being removed, and maybe even the biomass boiler.
Black smokestack.
What's that?
The black smokestack.
Okay. I haven't heard for sure yet, but I think that's, that's in the works of possibly just getting rid of the biomass boiler, keeping the gas turbine for now, but removing the biomass boiler. If you didn't do that, if you kept the biomass boiler and you wanted to use it, then you'd have to find some way to get the fuel to it, you know, and make it go away. You've got to find another way to get to it. I don't know, I don't really what the, what the plan is at this point in time. We should find out more, I guess, when we get the applications in.
Well, we've been promised updates for two or three months here now. Still not hearing anything, no idea what the, what the timeline is for them to get the rest of that stuff out of there.
Yeah.
They don't seem to be...
So about the only things that we left is the gas code zone, and the education building.
I'm not even sure about that. You don't see that on, on the Whole Oceans video. It's not there.
But they aren't buying that. They, they knew that.
Yeah, it could be just an artistic rendering that it wasn't, not accurately portraying everything.
What do they got left on the shore? Just one warehouse left?
Yeah, there's, there's a warehouse, yeah.
Steel protection badges back.
The two tanks are on, are on the plan. I don't see those being going away.
Who owns those? Sprite?
I don't know.
Used to. Back there. Those used to be bunker sea tanks.
Of course, the CMP substation is staying.
That's the MPs.
They're showing a walking trail going along the water there. I can imagine a walking trail being near those power lines. On the, in the Whole Ocean videos, you see a place for a walking trail along the shore there.
Yep, the power lines are underground and on the site.
Well, I know, but I'm not sure what CMP would have to say about, I mean, the public here, their power lines like that, but who knows?
But isn't the, isn't the shore area where there's supposedly some Indian artifacts there?
Well, that's another, that's another thing that, I'm not sure how, how much we should be talking about at this point, at this point in time without an application, but that's something you do review as a standard in your ordinance, that you review historical or prehistorical sites affected by the project.
Anything else?
Yeah, one more. Is there any update on when they're going to be putting the power lines in for that industrial park right here?
They have applied for pole permits, and it's possible that they might deal with that this Thursday during the budget meeting. If they don't, it'll be the following Thursday. They'll issue the pole permits, and then Wink and Paus all lined up to put them in.
Yeah, because, you know, I know, we just looked at the approval, the land use approval for the muscle...
Right.
They don't even have power up there yet.
Power lines are owned by CMP, and put in by CMP. They aren't Tiger Town's utilities to spot, so...
I understand that.
No, I have not received a building permit application for that project yet, and I don't, I'll break your family time soon.
Just another quick question about, you brought that one up. What about the Central Street Palace next to the, next to the landfill in all the trailer park? And is that, anything about one they're planning to? The town, the town approved the contract zoning.
Yes.
So now he needs to develop his proposal or bring it to us? Is that what I'm saying?
Right, and my understanding is in the works. They're waiting for the site conditions to improve. Obviously, there's a little snow, frozen ground, it's wet, so it's, it's hard to go out there to finalize the wet land renovations and design septic systems. So they're, they're waiting for the right conditions to do that. The contract zone, by the way, I'm not sure I told you this, but the, the contract zone was amended by the town council. They ended up approving one that, they deleted the language about the stipulation that the park be for people age fifty-five and older. They removed that. They felt that that shouldn't be a condition in the agreement, but it should be entirely up to the owner of the park to decide if that should be a limitation to stay in place or not as time progresses.
He can use it as a covenant type.
If he wants to, yes, but because it's been taken out of the contract zone agreement, he can change that whenever he wishes on his own, and it's not a violation of the agreement.
Did he request that, or did that someone from the town?
It came out of the discussion by the council.
They, they felt that there would be a liability for them to regulate that to that degree, on the contract zone.
It's hard to enforce.
Right.
You'll have senior citizens, you'll have, have family members that come in all the time, maybe stay within periods of time, but you know, it's, it's just a, it's a real difficult standard to enforce by municipality. The park owner would have a closer handle on that, I think, because they may have outside management, or be there on a daily basis or a frequent basis to know what's going on in the park. But town would not be policing that if it was in the agreement, would not be policing that.
Move to a jury? All the same?